I'd like to call to order our first meeting of 2022, January the 6th. If we could please just introduce ourselves as we begin.
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, county administrator. Mike Frigini will come for the board.
Stephanie Summer Dumas, president of the board. So we would move forward, our first item on the agenda is a motion to adjourn CNA DA for the year 2021, which basically means for those that are listening that there's no other business to come forward to us in 2021. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn CNA DA for year 2021.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And before we move forward, what I would like to do, I know last year when we closed our meeting and I asked for a prayer, a silent prayer for our commission board and also the Hamilton County residents. And I would ask, even though it's not on the agenda, if we could just have a silent prayer to begin our 2022 year. Amen. So our next order on the agenda is a motion nominating Commissioner Summer Dumas to act as temporary president of the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I would suggest maybe having another commissioner make that motion.
I move to have Commissioner Summer Dumas as the temporary president of the board.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Thank you. Yes. Our next order of business is a motion nominating Leslie Hervey to act as temporary clerk of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
We do, we do have a, do you have your order of motions?
Yes.
In front of you.
I do.
No, this one. Did you get this one?
No.
Okay, because we were going by this.
I don't have that one.
Okay.
The clerk, wherever.
So, item number two, I'd like to have a motion nominating Leslie, well, we're going to item number three. Motion nominating Leslie Hervey to act as temporary clerk of the Board of County Commissioners. And you are in order for the third one.
I don't have that. But who's second? Who's second in the motion? Am I making the motion?
Yeah, you're making the motion.
Oh, okay. Yep, so I, I move to nominate Leslie Hervey as our, to act as our temporary clerk of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes, thank you. So item number four is a motion.
Madam President.
Yes, uh huh.
Before we get to item, as we go into item number four, I'd like to make a comment.
As it relates to what?
Item number four.
Okay, can we have a motion first and then ask for comments?
That's fine, I'll just look by what the legal.
You can do it either way, you can have non-foreign or they can make them.
Let's make a motion first, that would be great. So, I think it would be probably out of order for me to make the motion, so.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. So I'll move to nominate Stephanie Summer Dumas to serve as the president of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2022.
Second.
Commissioner.
Madam, I do have to discuss.
That's what I was, yeah, getting ready to.
Thank you very much. First of all, want to say Happy New Year, as I go into my second year on the county commission board. Last year was very tough because most of the sixth floor was working from home when I arrived here. We had to learn a lot quickly, I had to put my own swearing in on, which was not here, had to deal with $61 million that had to be voted on my second day, and then told about how do we organize our county in terms of leadership. Didn't have a lot of time to really research it, but knew that Commissioner Dumas had not had an opportunity to be the president, and I thought that certainly it was her turn to have the opportunity to be the president. And I introduced the motion and we passed it and we moved forward. Since the being here for a year and had a chance to kind of study and understand how the system worked, I thought it was similar to the city, but it's not. When the city, when you vote on a whole term, you vote the whole term and therefore you kind of move forward. But here, the ORC, AKA the Ohio Revised Code, says that each year, each year, we would as a board have to vote on who's going to be president, vice president, et cetera. Knowing that now, I looked back and said, well, it's our first time having three women actually elected to county commission. And I know that in my race, I received over 200,000 votes. I know that Commissioner Treehouse received over 200,000, and as well as Commissioner Dumas received a lot of votes. And so I thought and looked at the, based on the law of us voting each time, and the fact that each of us are individually elected, and each of us have to run on our own platforms. And so when people vote for us, they vote on our platforms individually. And I thought, and I looked at Franklin County, and my good friend Kevin Boyce, who was president last year, and my good friend Erica Crowley, who just got elected, who is now the president of Franklin County, and they do it one year, and I looked at the law and I said, well, under this system, we should rotate. And I wanted to present that as an option. I think that's the best option because we're each elected and have a lot of people that elected us. And if we continued with the pattern that we would be doing on a two-year basis, then Commissioner Treehouse would not get a term in this four-year term. Each, each year we voted four years. So she would not get a term at all in this. And I said, well, I don't want anyone to feel as though that I would be preventing them from getting a term after they've been elected for a four-year term. I shared that thought last year, and that's why I supported Commissioner Dumas to be the president. I still feel that this year, as we're moving forward, that each person should have a turn within this four-year window. I just think it's the fair thing to do, and as I've been out, I've been hearing people ask me, well, you know, who's going to be president, each of y'all going to get a turn? And it just made me start to look at, based on the law, that we vote each year, we cannot vote beyond one year, according to the Ohio Revised Code. Based on the fact that each of us have to get elected individually, and, you know, coming in with, you know, 200,000-plus votes, I just think that having it go one year, one year, one year, everyone will get an opportunity, not just the person, because it's not really about us as a person, but the 200,000 people that voted for us, each of us, they deserve it. The president helped set the tone, each of us vote, each of us ran on different platforms. And those platforms deserve to be at the helm. When I ran, I said, I'm going to run to shake it up, do it different, be more transparent. Sometimes that's not popular. I didn't run to be popular. So when I thought about it, I don't want anyone out in the streets saying that Commissioner Reese stopped me from becoming a president during the term that I was elected. I don't want that at all. And I have been pushing for fairness for a very long time, and that's what I'm about. So once I got down here, now, I was told one thing, but once I got down here and I researched and I talked to our lawyers, I looked at the Ohio Revised Code, I saw that anything beyond one year, we can't do it anyway legally, we're not binding, we only can do one year. And I pulled up the Ohio Revised Code. So with that being said, I just would support, you know, last year I supported Commissioner Dumas because she had not had an opportunity to be the president. And I just want to make sure that in this rotation, if we keep going this way, Commissioner Treehouse would not have an opportunity to be president. I just think with the three of us, three strong women who have each individually been elected, we owe it to our voters that voted for us individually, to each have an opportunity to put their, their ideas, their platforms on the front burner. And so that's why today, I don't support this particular rotation, because I just think that it would, one, leave out Commissioner Treehouse if we continue with this two and two. And at the same time, I just think it's only fair to those who voted. I mean, people went out and voted for each of us, and it would give us an opportunity for everybody to have a chance to do a rotation. So wanted to put that out there. Like I said, last year I didn't know the rules. I barely could get somebody on the telephone down here. And now that I had a chance to be down here, look up the rules and understand the rules, I just want to say that I'm very much interested in a different model that'll be more fair, more on a rotation, and everyone who got individually elected, their voters will feel as though they've had a chance to have their person as the president. So that's kind of where we are. I wanted to present that, and maybe I, I might present a different opinion and an outside look, because I'm, I'm the only one on here who has not served as a president, so I could kind of bring an outside approach, an outside look to it. So I wanted to put that on the table.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Treehouse?
Yeah, Madam President, so I have made this motion, I believe it's the, the right rotation. We had extensive conversations last year when we were organizing, we organize every year as been, as has been stated, and we have done it in a couple of different, different ways historically. Sometimes it is the one-one-and-one rotation, and sometimes it has been the two-and-two. And so most recently, when Todd Portune and myself and you, Madam President, were serving, we decided on the two-and-two, once before you got here and then once when you were here. And so while I was trying to make that decision last year, I became convinced that the two-and-two made the most sense, because it does take some time to get your feet under you as the president, to understand the role, and to really dig into the work. And so I had the opportunity to serve for two years, two consecutive years as president of the board, and I am happy to offer that to both of my colleagues in the same way that it was offered to me. So that's why I am supportive of the two-and-two model, so, which would mean that Commissioner Summer Dumas, she would serve this year, and then Commissioner Reese would have the following two years. And so that is something I've committed to, and I'm happy to abide by that moving forward.
Thank you so much. Only comment I have is I want our residents to know that everyone's platform, no matter who's up here, will be listened to and included in all of our priorities, and we will make sure that that happens, no matter who the president, vice president, or commissioner is. So there will be no, no one who brings anything forth for the people that voted for them that we will not listen to and try to enact. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Abstention.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your support. We'll move on to item number five. We need a motion for item number five.
I will move to nominate Alicia Reese to serve as the vice president of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Item number six, a motion, let me see who's down there, Reese, you're down to make that motion.
Item number six, I make a motion to nominate Leslie Hervey to serve as the interim clerk of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number seven, I need a motion.
I will move to nominate Lisa Daria and Jeff Aludo to serve as the deputy clerk of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2022.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And you have before you a resolution, item number eight, a resolution designating members of the Board of County Commissioners to serve on various committees, council, and boards for the year 2022. I would make the motion to adopt.
I will second, and can I clarify that this is, these are the same committees and boards of last year, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yep, I'll make the second.
And just in addition, a comment also, I have the boards and commissions, you can see those on the website, and as Commissioner Treehouse indicated, they are the same, there has not been any change. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And item nine is a resolution amending a resolution endorsing the concept of open meetings of the board. Can I have a motion?
Yes, I move to, I entered, I move to have a motion to designate members of the board to the county commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry. Nine, resolution amending a resolution endorsing the concept of open meetings.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. And our last item, as far as a resolution to designate official representation and alternate for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of CCAO in 2022, I need a motion. Well, we need to designate who those people will be. So, we can have a motion for the designate, and then we'll, the alternate we'll talk about.
Do, I, I'm happy to make the motion, offering the resolution to designate the official representative and alternate for the purpose of voting at the annual meeting of the CCAO in 2022, knowing that we're going to discuss those individuals, am I right?
I would say, I'm confused, is this one resolution for both, the representative and the alternate?
For, for both, yeah.
Okay, so you're, she just brought that motion forward.
Right, and I'm going, I'm going to second it.
Is there a discussion on that?
Yeah, that's what, I'm giving, yeah, thank you though. Any discussion?
So.
Here and now, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, no, I, we, I assume we need to name the two individuals, that will be the voting member and the alternate? Voting member to the CCAO.
Okay.
So I am happy to make, make the motion then for Commissioner Dumas to serve as the voting member. I, I am asking the board, though, that I have been elected as the secretary of the Board of the CCAO, and would like to serve as the alternate in the case that you're not there. I recently attended a meeting where there was an election that took place, but the, the voting member and the alternate were not there. And so I asked if I could vote on behalf of Hamilton County, and they let me do that, but I was wondering if I could serve as the alternate in the case that the president's not able to be there.
Madam President, I have no prob, I have no problem with that.
Okay, you've made the motion, we'll second it with myself, Stephanie Summer Dumas being the designate, and Commissioner Treehouse the alternate.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So we will move forward, the last items on our agenda are commissioner comments. And so I'd like to begin, comments. And then my colleagues will also have remarks, I'm sure. I want to first note that one year ago today, our nation faced one of the most vicious attacks on American democracy in our lifetime. Many of us watched in horror as a crowd broke through the security of the U.S. Capitol, endangering elected officials, staff, and guests. Some lost their lives. Also, my chief of staff himself was on the brink in the hospital due to COVID-19. He's here today to speak about it, so that was also a significant day for our team. As our nation marks its anniversary, we can say, the attempt to destroy American democracy failed. We must stand for what is right and stand against what is wrong. Together, we must be determined to be one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. It has been my humble honor to serve you, the citizens of Hamilton County, as president of Hamilton County Commission for the year 2021. I am honored to accept the position of president for the year 2022. We will have a state-of-county address in a few weeks, but I want to take a moment and reflect upon some of the great accomplishments of 2021. I am honored to serve as president of an all-female commission. No one of us can do anything as it relates to authority for government, taxing, budgeting, appropriations, purchasing, overseeing county administration and policy. However, together we can and have accomplished great success for our citizens with a determination to leave no one behind. I thank my colleagues for their contributions to the success of our commission in serving the people of Hamilton County with dignity and integrity. I thank our administration and our staff, these are some of the hardest-working people that I know. Job well done. In 2021, together, we dedicated the Todd B. Portune Center for County Government Monday, January the 25th. Todd Portune was a champion for the people. We shall forever remember and honor him. We sought and received emergency rental assistance funding from US, the US Department of Treasury. We launched the www513relief.org website March the 10th. The first economic relief-a-thon held March the 16th. We held virtual evening Board of Commission meetings hosted by local government, so nothing stopped. We continued on and it even worked harder. COVID-19 mass vaccination sites at Centa Center began in March. We launched Get Out the Vax campaign, pursuing a goal to have 80% of our residents vaccinated by July the 4th. We didn't meet that goal, but we tried very hard to get there. Hamilton County provided the use of the Powell Brown Stadium and free parking for Get Out the Vax event Sunday, April the 25th. The Census Bureau appropriation numbers released April the 26th, actually our population increased, which affects our funding that we receive from the federal and state government. Although we had a pandemic, people were still out there trying to get the numbers, and the numbers increased about 3.5%. We had a ribbon-cutting for the coroner's office and crime lab Monday, May the 3rd, one of the most advanced crime labs in the nation. This will be used by multiple jurisdictions. 513 Day, announced Get Your Sensi On campaign went very well. Joined the leadership of the Cincinnati Reds for Reopening Day on June the 2nd. Phase 3B ribbon-cutting occurred in, on June the 9th. The first Juneteenth flag raising was Thursday, June the 17th, and we also had our first Juneteenth paid holiday in Hamilton County, June the 18th. Hamilton County Equity and Resources Mobile Tech Bus launch and ribbon-cutting Saturday on June the 19th. 513 Small Business Assist Program helped those struggling to apply for federal, state, and local funds, and who needs one-on-one events. Hamilton County Emergency Management Homeland Security received their first official accreditation designation on Friday, July the 23rd. They are one of 30 in the nation that have an accreditation, so this is their first time. The Black Music Walk of Fame kickoff induction was Saturday, July the 24th. The third round of small business grants occurred in September of 16, this September the 16th. Funding secured for, we, we've been working very hard to get funding secured for the Harrison Avenue Viaduct, and we were finally able to do that, part of that through the Metro Issue 7 that was passed. We have our first female treasurer in Hamilton County, Jill Schiller, came September the 6th. And then African, African-American male coalition, I'm sure Commissioner Treehouse would talk more about this, our countywide response team that was started for African-Americans. We welcomed the USA versus Mexico soccer fans from around the world, they had a great reception, and we all attended that. We were able to pass a 30% PTR for our residents in Hamilton County. And I just want to, you know, reiterate again that none of this could happen, no matter who brings it up, who initiates it, none of this can happen unless we have at least two votes. And I would say the majority of the things that are on this paper were agreed by unanimously. We passed the solid waste rules, approved a structurally balanced budget for the first time in many years, and we have a reserve that has not been seen in decades. And then, of course, we rolled out the nonprofit grant. So these are just a few things that we've done as a commission. We could, I could have added more, and I'm sure my colleagues would add more, but we have been working, working, working as a team to unify, to reach out to our residents in this community. We listen, we heard you, continue to let us know where we're missing you. I know I saw last night on television a, a mother who was sleeping in her van with four children, and that's the gap we missed it. We can't get everybody, and I missed it at the end of the story, I wasn't able to write it down, but we have resources that can help that family. So if you know people that are in need, please let us know, because we have the energy, we have, we, our staff have the effort, we have the money, we have the vision to do that, so please let us know. And that will end my comments. I will, my colleague, Vice President Reese, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I do want to thank everyone for 2021. I know at the end, we had a lot of things coming, the budget, et cetera, so we were trying to kind of get out of here, but I want to, first of all, I want to first start off, and I want to thank God for 2021. I want to thank the voters that voted in the county commission race, a lot of times that, I was told, the, the county commission race, kind of the, the numbers drop off, but people did not skip that category because they understand how important the county commission is for each of your lives. I want to thank the administration, and I want to thank my colleagues on the board. The way things are structured, each of us, we don't compete with each other, because we have to get elected individually, and there, we are not, we don't run against each other, we're not in a race against each other, we would have a different opponent when we're in the race. In running in 2020, that's when the pandemic really shut everything down, and we have not really fully recovered since. We saw so many people during the race in 2020 that lost their job, people lost family members. members, people lost friends, folks were in the hospital, we started, we had to wear masks, we got a vaccine. But first, we started without a vaccine, then we got the vaccine, then we had to get people to get the shots. And so as we entered 2021, it was very different for me. I've been at the city level, I've been at the state level, but this one was different, because when we came in, even the building was shut down. Many people had been working from home for almost a year. We came in in almost darkness, walking into our offices, and the swearing-in, I wanted the people to be able to participate. We had to finance, develop, and create a creative way where people can be safe, and we had to pay for it ourselves. Our campaign did, so that people can be sworn in, so we didn't even get to get sworn in in this building. A lot of things were coming at us fast, and I think we got a desk now, so we're ready to go. But there were a lot of challenges, but with that, we never took our eye off of the people. My focus in my whole life is dedicated to helping the people, no matter what position I've been elected or positions I haven't been elected to. And when I was on city council, I started a thing called a report to the people, because we individually have to be elected, and then we collectively come together. And our jobs is to bring what we heard from the people to the table, and hopefully we can get the votes to pass it. But each of us have a strength, and each of us have to bring something to the table, and then we negotiate it. And I do want to highlight those things each of us bring, even though our colleagues come along, or I come along and vote for them. So what I wanted to make sure of, and I wanted to continue that effort with a report to the people. Most people have an annual report, and so my office has been working really hard, and other offices as well, but I want to highlight my office, and I know each commissioner will highlight theirs also. But with my office coming in with all of these challenges, not really having an orientation, not, most of the building closed down, having to be creative to have our own swearing-in so the people can participate, coming in at times we didn't have a computer that even worked, phones wasn't working, but you never stop, and I just want to thank my office for not stopping. So we said we're going to come down, we're going to shake it up, we're going to do some things different, we're going to challenge the system, and we did that in 2021, and some things went good, and some things we still have continued to work on. I want to highlight that I have a report to the people, that's something I always have done. It's nothing new, it's just a new office. A report to the people, people can contact my office to get a copy of it, or we can send it to you online. We're very excited about a lot of the things that we were able to help lead, as well as things we're able to help support our colleagues that they led. And so in there, you'll be able to see what we were able to do, the 513 relief bus that came from the people, and I'm glad we were able to bring that idea, and we're able to help a lot of people. Almost $15 million help given out, 4,000 people were serviced, 1,500 vaccinations was given. This was an idea that came from the people, that's why we always say, as a board, if you have some ideas, let us know, and we'll try to bring those ideas to life. And I want to thank all of the workers that ever worked, helped, developed, supported the bus. We really appreciate you. That was a temporary bus, we hoping in 2022, our new bus will finally be developed, so this will be a new way that we do business. We'll bring Hamilton County to the people. We went to 78 locations, 28 different zip codes, we covered the entire county. If you was in Cleves or Harrison, or you was in Avondale or Bon Hill, we were there, and I want, I think that was a major highlight for us. In addition to that, we also, was mentioned the Black Music Walk of Fame, which we're excited about, which will be our only major inclusive project on the banks, out 198 acres besides the Freedom Center. So we're excited to get that open by the music festival. Why the music festival? Because we're trying to bring dollars back to the county. That's a big weekend for us, and we want to bring business back to the county, money back to the county. Our Small Business Relief, I'm excited about now, we're going to have a small business office to continuously help people. We went from $4 million to $11 million that this board moved forward. A lot of businesses might, doors might be shut today if it wasn't for this board stepping up for small businesses. So I'm excited about it, there's a lot in here. I think the thing that hits my heart is the Breast Cancer Awareness Day. We had never had one of those, and the women and the men and the survivors that came here, I'm looking forward to building on that and continuing that to go. So everything that you need to know, we got it in a report to the people from our office, and it's something that we started in 1999 at city council, and we kept it every year, and we're going to keep moving forward with it. So I'm looking forward to 2022. We got some exciting things in this budget, and one of the things I'm very excited about that I know all of us care about is our youth. We've got a youth development and a youth training and development office that'll be opening up. We got a small business office that'll be opening up. We're going, we got a million dollars to help senior citizens with your gas and electric. And Madam President, the one thing that I will end with, I think we gave a lot of positive, but I want to say that I do want to thank Commissioner Dreehouse. In the budget, we had a lot of discussion about testing. We had no idea this Omnicron, and now a Fluron, and all of that, and testing is critical. So I'm glad that we have some funding for testing. We'd like to possibly hear in short order from the administration when that will be up and moving, and also the economic help. We've got a lot of people that have needed this help. We got a long pipeline, we want to clear out that pipeline. So I'd like to see, have presented to us, what are we going to do to get the people out of the pipeline? They were approved, some people in October, some people in November, and the landlords are saying, we can't go another day, we got to get our check. We've got people saying that I applied and I got approved, I didn't get heard back, I haven't heard back. So I think our focus now has to be on testing and clearing out the pipeline, because we're at the first of the month, and a lot of people got to pay those bills. If we could get some kind of plan to move forward, we have the money, but I think we need to move kind of in that direction. People have been inboxing me on Facebook, calling our office, texting me, dropping me at church, I've been approved, where is the money? So I know that we have been focused on intake, now maybe certainly looking at the next, I don't know, 30 days, on how do we now get these funds out to people who've already been approved? So those are my comments, and I'm looking forward new in '22. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so today, for me, is a bit of a mixed emotion kind of day, because here we sit on January 6th. It's such a somber day for the nation, as we remember the insurrection that happened just a year ago, and how troubling, really, that is, I think, for us as a nation, and I think we all feel that personally. Yet, you know, we've got a new day here in Cincinnati with a new mayor and new council members being sworn in. We had that repeat itself throughout the county with so many of the local villages and cities throughout the county swearing in new members and new leaders, and so it is an exciting time in Hamilton County. We have just reorganized ourselves, and so it is a day of mixed emotions for me. But, you know, I think it's a day of optimism, but also a day to recognize that we've got challenges ahead, COVID in particular. I think all of us wish that we were not talking about COVID anymore, but here we are. We've got higher numbers than we have ever had throughout the pandemic, way higher, and so we need to continue to concern ourselves with making sure people have information and can keep themselves and their families safe. I know we're going to be talking a lot this year about housing and about mental health, about youth, about workforce development, because we have those committee recommendations coming forward to all of us from the work groups that we established last year. So looking forward to tackling the challenges. We've accomplished a lot in the last year, I'm very proud of the work that we have collectively done, and I look forward to working with my two colleagues to move our priorities forward in the upcoming year, along with the support of staff, which has just been invaluable, and they are working harder than any state F I know to make sure that we are continuing to move this county forward. And in the end, the citizens are the ones that drive the work, and we are here to serve, and so I will look forward also to that partnership with citizens throughout the county to move our agendas forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to make a final comment as relates to testing. I would like to ask my colleagues if you could contact our office by Tuesday, if possible, to let me know if you're in agreement with setting up a policy for testing. Those who had heard about the new testing site at the Ohio Means job, we closed that down for a lot of reasons, but part of it is needing testing. So it just confirms that we need to make sure that staff are vaccinated and that they're at least having tests done. And so if you're in agreement with having a policy for Hamilton County employees, if you could let my, even if you're not in agreement, let my office know by Tuesday, because Jeff had indicated it's not hard to pull something together to get it going, so. That's all I have. I'd like to, at this time, to make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.